We'll call this Nick Doerder. It's today is April the 12th, 2021. This is our regular monthly board commissioner meeting. And we, as always, begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. And so we're going to have Commissioner David Walker to lead us in our prayer, and Commissioner Patrick Ellis will lead us in our pledge.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity to be here tonight. And dear Lord, we thank you for your many blessings, dear Lord. We thank you for the good rain we've had. We thank you for the good Son you gave us today. And dear Lord, we thank you most of all for your Son Jesus, who died on the cross for our sins and rose three days later. And I just pray as we meet tonight that you would guide our minds, our thoughts. And dear Lord, may we do what would be honoring in your sight and best for the people that we have the honor to represent here in this county. And we just thank for all your blessings, dear Lord. Just be of those that's lost loved ones today. We know personally of people who have lost loved ones. I just pray you be those families today. In your name I pray, amen.
Teacher? Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You hear a motion, we approve the minutes.
So do you.
Second. Your favorite.
Aye.
I need to get an approval on the agenda. Everyone's had a chance to look at it, so what's the board?
Ms. Chairman, we'd like to add a couple items to the agenda tonight. One would be the trash ordinance. Two would be a recreation matter. Three would be a Zoom, concerning the Zoom meetings. Fourth, a mask. Six, we had this table for four to debate department heads, the hiring of department heads. And last item would be a closed session regarding employee matters.
Mr. Chairman, before we move forward, could we approve the minutes from the closed session?
Ms. Chairman, make the motion, we approve the minutes from the closed session.
Thank you. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Vaughn? Okay, we have six items here and one closed session. Is that correct? Commissioner Walker?
Total six, yes, sir, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, is the department matter to be discussed during closed session?
Yes. You need a second on the revision? Yes. All second. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving along to the appointments. First on the list is the COVID-19 update from Mr. Keller. If you would come forward, Mr. Keller, and give us that update.
Good afternoon. Hope everyone is doing well. Appreciate the opportunity to provide another update. Today's day 393 of the EOC being activated for COVID-19. Today's numbers, as many of you have probably seen in our press releases, is 14 new positives. We have a 9.88% 14-day positivity rate, which is an increase of what we've seen over the past seven to 10 days. We're closely monitoring the numbers for any potential spike from the Easter holiday as well as spring break. And within seven to 14 days, we should know whether we're going to see that surge or not here in the county. When we review our metrics, we do have a couple metrics that are somewhat concerning the past seven days, and that's the number of positives. In individuals 50 to 64 years of age, we've noticed an upward trend in that age group, as well as those that are 25 to 49 years of age. Specifically today, that was one of the largest increases that we've seen among our age groups. Good news, hospitalizations remain very low. We've had no new deaths reported in the past week. Long-term care and congregate living facilities are extremely stable and no new outbreaks. And we remain cautiously optimistic that we are seeing a significant improvement overall with regards to COVID-19. On the vaccine front, we have administered in McDowell, to McDowell County citizens, 13,233 first doses. That represents right at 29% of the population has received or is partially vaccinated. 9,671 second doses and a 21% vaccination rate for McDowell County citizens. When we look at the state average for fully vaccinated individuals, or partially and fully vaccinated individuals, I should say, we are running behind the state average or below. We'd like to see these numbers much higher. And one thing that we are seeing is supply is outrunning demand right now. And we've seen that not only in McDowell, but throughout the region. There's an abundance of vaccines that are sitting and waiting for people to book appointments. The last week and a half, we have transitioned to no appointment needed at our clinic on multiple days. That's been advertised on our social media pages through Nixle, as well as other outlets, when we've had more supply than actual appointments. We are, I'd like to take just a second to talk about some more vaccinations. Statistics for McDowell, partially vaccinated 65 to 74 years of age, right at 67% of the McDowell County citizens in that age group have been partially vaccinated. That's almost two points or two percentage points above the state average. So that's the only age group that we're really running ahead is in the 65 to 74 years of age. When we look at 75 and older, we're about three percentage points behind the state average for partially vaccinated and about two percentage points behind for fully vaccinated. So I think we do have some additional outreach work to do with regards to reaching this elderly population. And our staff's been heavily engaged with the Senior Center, Meals on Wheels, and several other organizations to try to reach the elderly population that may not understand how to book an appointment or access that vaccine. So we still have quite a bit of work to do there. The clinic remains at Grace Community Church. Our team is working on future planning, what this looks like for the month of May and beyond into June, working with the Health Department. We are administering Pfizer again this week. This is the third or fourth week that we've administered Pfizer. We got switched from Moderna to Pfizer. We've had one shipment of Johnson &amp; Johnson, and we have not been notified of any additional shipments of the one-dose J&amp;J vaccine. We do have additional vaccine providers online in the county, including Walmart and Ingles, as well as one private pharmacy that is administering a vaccine. As far as outreach, I alluded to that just a minute ago, but we are making a significant effort to reach homebound citizens. We have a process established where anyone who is homebound that can't reach the clinic can call the Vaccine Scheduling Center, and they will line up for a community paramedic to come out and administer the vaccine to the homebound citizen, first and second dose. This is an ideal situation for the Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, where one dose fully vaccinates the individual, but we still have not received that supply. We have worked closely with our homeless shelters. We've actually had a ground operation of door-to-door vaccine administration in the East Marion and the Clinchfield community. And that produced about 100 individuals that we think would not have reached the actual drive-through clinic. And they were vaccinated last week in those communities. Also worked with a number of businesses to do vaccines on their property for customers, where there's a lot of traffic moving in and out. So another outreach effort. Still have quite a bit of work to do. It does concern me that we're seeing the interest in the vaccination slow when we're only 20% fully vaccinated in the county. We still have some additional work to do with regards to vaccines. Overall, the situation remains stable. Like I said, we're cautiously optimistic, certainly monitoring for what's going on in other parts of the country, through the Midwest, with some of the variants, specifically the European variant that is causing issues. But at this point, we're, overall, we're very stable. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
I'd just like to say I appreciate your hard work that you guys have done. And most of us, I think, have probably been with the clinic out there to get your shot. It's amazing to see how efficient these guys are, you and your staff are about getting people through there and the rapid rate that you do it in. And I think you're doing a great job there.
Had multiple comments on the, how smooth the transition was from spot to spot out there, and just your team's doing a great job, and volunteers.
We appreciate that, man. Huge effort among many, many agencies, public health, and our faith-based communities and agencies and partners. Grace Community Church allowing us the use of that facility has been tremendous to allow us to get the input where we want it for the clinics. Lots of people have volunteered and worked many hours. We definitely appreciate that.
Ms. Keller, a couple questions. Johnson &amp; Johnson, so we've got one shipment of Johnson &amp; Johnson. And you, do you anticipate more to kind of, or what's?
So we've been notified that the pharmacy in Old Fort received a shipment of Johnson &amp; Johnson. I don't know the specifics of that shipment. I think it's unlikely at this point, if we receive a large amount of J&amp;J, we may receive, we're applying for each week, for small mobile vaccine clinics for the community paramedics and other type of events to where we need that one shot. But with the Johnson &amp; Johnson supply issues, some of the issues they've had in the news here lately, I think that supply chain is strained at this point, which makes it unlikely that we'll receive a large shipment.
And the switch from Moderna to Pfizer, so we're not going to be receiving any more Moderna, it's going to be Pfizer moving forward?
It can change on a weekly basis. I think it's important for folks who came through our clinic and had Moderna as their first dose, their second dose is secure. And when they come back to get their second dose, they will receive Moderna. And if you receive first dose Pfizer, when you return back for your second appointment, you'll receive Pfizer. But it's been a challenge for our staff, because there are days we're running Pfizer first dose and Moderna second dose. And ensuring that we don't have any cross and any errors in administration, it's all hands on deck to make sure that doesn't happen.
And one more thing, can you clarify? Ask a gentleman, ask him the other day where I'd be and I got the second shot. And I said, have you got your shot yet? He said, no, I'm not getting it. And I said, well, why not? He said, you mind me asking? He said, well, basically upon the fact that he said that the vaccine is produced from aborted tissue. Can you clarify that for anybody who's going to watch this? Because he was saying basically because of his religious belief, it would not allow him to get a shot.
So the Pfizer and the Moderna, the CDC has released information to validate that that's not correct for Pfizer and Moderna. Some religious beliefs and organizations, specifically the Catholic, there are some concerns with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. But for Pfizer and Moderna, there's been clear communication that that is not the case.
Got a question.
Great job, people, you did good work.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much. I appreciate the support of the board. I'll end just with an update. Our team, along with the Weather Service and the Irishville Fire Department, surveyed an area along Muddy Creek today that confirmed an EF0 tornado. Did touchdown in that area on Saturday evening. 80 mile-per-hour winds. The path of the tornado was 0.6 mile in length. Maximum width at one point, damage was 180 yards wide. Pretty sizable from what we've seen in past tornadic events. Definitely an example of how even living at the base of the mountains, tornadoes can slip in. We've seen that through Sugar Hill, Glenwood, Ashford North Cove back in 2019. Fortunately, no injuries or fatalities. It's really a blessing, one area down there that we could have seen some folks severely injured or killed. It's just the trees fell in the right way.
No structure involved.
We did have numerous structures that were damaged. As far as residential structures, it was minor to moderate roof damage. But we had a number of barns and sheds that were totally destroyed during the event.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Next item being, we have Ms. Kim Wilburn, the election board director. She's going to come and give us information on the new equipment that we're purchasing.
Good evening, everybody. Okay. Coming to you guys, we have, as required by federal law, we have the ADA compliant equipment that we have to use at each precinct and each one-stop shop. Right now, we have the AutoMark, which is actually a marking device that is used. The ballots are put inside. If it's someone that's visually impaired, they have that piece of equipment to use. There's actually braille on the screen. They do have headphones. So those machines are aging out. They were purchased for McDowell County in 2006. And we have the opportunity, the state has some additional grant monies, and we can replace. We actually have 21 of those AutoMark machines. And you should have in your packet, I believe, a sheet with the cost and the grant money that we could be awarded. $74,678.75 for the purchase of 21 additional. And that is including trade-in of the AutoMarks to the company, which is Election Systems and Software. They, with the machines that we have that actually tally the votes, which is our DS200, this is through Election Systems and Software as well. In North Carolina, there are 21 counties that have the express votes. There are eight counties that are purchasing. It's pending right now. And in 2020, there was over 4,000 used in North Carolina elections. So it's not that we're going to be out here on an island somewhere with just us using this equipment. This is something that is used statewide and nationwide. But with the grant monies, roughly, we could receive $49,894. And that would leave us $24,784.75. And we actually have that money in our budget for this year. We don't have to go into the 2021, '22 budget. The cost or the expenditure has to be done by June the 30th. So it would have to be in this budget year to be able to get the money. Any questions?
Ms. Chairman, make a motion to approve the grant, I mean, approve the equipment purchase.
Motion. Second. In discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Easy enough. Thanks, Bob.
Next item to see, we have Ms. Blair Milton come and give us an update on the Old Fort Park.
Good evening. Thank you for coming up with y'all tonight on some park and trail stuff. So in front of you, I have actually passed out two maps. I wanted to give you an update on park planning in Old Fort. This is the same park as last year that I assisted. The town of Old Fort applied for a Part of grant. And as you know, we didn't get it last year, but we're doing it again this year. And we have strengthened our application by doing this nice rendering from Destination by Design. With the help of Bob Hunnery and the friends of Fonte Flora, the McDowell CDA, and the town, they had commissioned Destination by Design to do this new rendering, and it is really nice. I just wanted to kind of walk through some of the amenities that they had suggested. If you'll notice, there's a bike garden, a parking lot, a splash pad with sun shade sales, a central event green space that you can put your picnic, or put your towels out and have picnics, a pump track, a dog park, a pollinator meadow, shade tree along the Fonte Flora State Trail, a fitness place gate, a hammock grove, restroom facilities, picnic shelters, and a rain garden with stormwater management area. So they have been able to have a picture put together of what the town, the residents of Old Fort want in a new park. And I wanted to come tonight to ask for a resolution, again, for $100,000 from McDowell County to put in for the Part of grant. This isn't a different ask, it's the same money as last year. But we need to have a new resolution. And if anybody has any questions about the new park, I'd be happy to.
Where's it located?
It's in Old Fort.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the plan adjustment. The money was there last year, it's the same amount it's there this year. And?
Okay, motion, second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You both. Okay, Ms. Blair.
I'm sorry, I have one more item of business. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead myself. In your packets, I provided some updates to two separate plans that we have in McDowell County. One, the Recreation Comprehensive Plan from 2014. You should see, little highlighted in blue, that's the new language that I'd like to update to this plan. It will just help with funding in the future. And we've had a lot of things go on since 2014. Same with the Master Greenway Plan. We have had changes to the route. And so I included some pictures of what that's going to look like. And I was going to ask if we could approve the amendment and get that approved.
As you compared that, can we get a motion on it?
Ms. Chairman, make a motion to approve the amendment that was presented.
Okay, got motion, second. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Blair. Now, I'd like to declare this a public hearing setting pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. We have Mr. Chuck Abernathy here with Economic Development to come and give us presentation. Young chap, Lord yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's staff, all of you. It's always a pleasure. This will be our third public hearing since December that we've had. So we've been busy, and there's a lot of positives that are taking place. We've got a project that really, really is a very nice project. Would be a good addition to the McDowell community. It is confidential at this point. The jobs are very diversified from anything that we currently have in a very good way. The company is an existing North Carolina company. They've been in business over three years. And I'll stand corrected. My memory is that they have about $4 million annually that they do in business. They employ 47 people right now at their location. Their wages are over $45,000 annual. So it's good-paying, good-paying jobs. And they provide health insurance at the rate of 75% for the employees. It's telecommunications, it's in that area. And so that gives you an idea. I've talked to some of you, others that I haven't. If you want to call, anytime you hear anything. But on anything like this, you're certainly welcome to do that. And Ashley is briefed as well. So he understands what we're doing. We're looking at adding, and I say this every time, and every time I probably apologize, but there's nothing I can do about it. The landscape changes on these. And it will be between 25 to 50 new jobs on top of the 47 that we have. The work takes place outside of the building. So it's like a service that occurs. So I cannot guarantee what number of those current people would move here, nor can I guarantee what number of the new hires would live here. But you would have the company located here, and the odds are that the bulk of those people would live here. They're looking at a building in our, what I call the original industrial park. I guess we've got three. And so it's the property, and you've got a map in your packet. And I would, we used to use overheads. And with COVID, we're not doing that. But I can come to any of your tables and point if you're not clear. But the property sits between Baldur, which is now ABB, and Bajleoni in the industrial park. It's a graded site, it has the road constructed, and there would be some water and sewer resolution that would need to occur. So some things still are still in a process. There's the investment number. If you wanted to plug in a number, for now, the company's finalizing. There's going to be quite a number of trucks and equipment, more personal business equipment, taxable value than building value. The buildings will be kind of small, again, because people will work out of the building in their trucks. What we've told the company is that we would provide two and a half acres, plus or minus, at no charge to them. And a standard would be $2,000 a job that the county has historically done, which would put us, you know, between $50,000 to $100,000 of incentives. And talk to Ashley, and you've got your tax people. But you might put a value of $45,000 to $50,000 on three acres as it's sitting. The property's been empty for a very long time, and we've not put anything on it. So I'm excited. And I really think this is a really positive project. So, Mr. Chairman, you got to take comment from the public, and of course, I'll answer questions of you guys.
Anyone have any comments, questions, they'd like to ask, Ken.
That including us?
Yes.
Okay. I'm always interested in the incentive program here in this county. I've been here nearly 20 years. And I stepped outside to get my reading glasses, my apologies. But it is, the land is being leased to them at no cost or given to them.
Given to them.
And their business is what?
The message.
The business is what? What type of business?
Telecommunication.
Is it a major company?
It's a company that has been in business three years. So I would probably say it's not a major company. But it's an established North Carolina company.
Moving from another part of North Carolina, is it such an area here?
I'm sorry.
Moving here as a?
It will be their primary, it will be their sole location. They will be relocated from another county here with their 47 jobs and then 25 to 15.
Okay, last question, and I appreciate you.
I like the questions, your final.
The monetary incentives goes toward work that will improve their property after we give them the land?
Yeah, yeah. What you've got are, with the job creation and the investment, the state of North Carolina basically authorizing counties to take action in this area based on the public benefit that is derived.
Last, very short, because this is important to all of us. Part of what I have to say later on in public speaking is... Part of what I have to say later on in public speaking is the incentive now in this county, the incentives for companies to move here and spend their money are there. The low cost of doing business, it's the quality of life, it's the good education system, it's the low crime rate. And at some point, with all due respect, we need to let that start outweighing giving away McDowell County property to businesses who probably have the money to locate here anyway. And that'll be all I'll have to say. Thank you for being such a good listener.
No, thank you. And you've raised two questions that I'll address. One is that the incentive level that we currently are using is less than what it used to be. It's less aggressive. And if you think about it, why is that the case? It's partly because of what you just said. The aggressiveness necessary is not what it used to be if you went back to 2008, '09, '10, '11. So that's one thing.
I know, you've heard the saying, "We'll build it and they'll come." We don't need to build it for them anymore. They're coming. This is the last plump year when it comes to economic viability for companies who want to escape the Waukesha County and Henderson Counties. That's just my thought.
Well, and there is a migration of people moving here. The population grew by 2% last year. And there is a business uptick from areas that are more challenging with taxes and with stability and whatever other issues. And so we're benefiting from that. So the gentleman is correct. But we do less than we used. We used to do $3,000 a job. And we now do less. And we do not, you raised a second real interesting question. And that is, you inferred, do you do the incentive if it's not necessary? You didn't say it like that, but that's what you meant. And the answer to that is if you can get out of it. And you don't have to do it. You don't incentivize something just for the sake of it. So, yeah.
And as far as that, there's been times that, as a coordinator, you've done that.
I've done it.
You negotiate.
It's a lot of fun to try to read a mind and guess if what you're doing is correct or not.
Roll out the red carpet for them.
Well, one other.
They'll go with sewer and water, they don't give them our land.
One other point, Chuck, you need to make. The surrounding counties and surrounding states are willing to offer sometimes much more than what we are in order to get business.
Yeah, you're in a, and some of you know this, and you're all dealing with it on other, on another project. And what you'll find is that the state of North Carolina is probably as conservative with incentives as any state that I've interacted with. You deal with Texas, South Carolina, Florida. Those states are giving much more. So, but I appreciate the question.
Mr. Abernathy, on the point he made about giving away the land, this company will be held to a certain agreement?
It's a real good question. And I meant to, you asked it earlier and I meant to address it. So the question is, what kind of hold is there on the land after we turn loose of it? And we've done it different ways, based on, really what drives it is if the company is borrowing and incurring debt. And then the land that it's on, a lot of times lending institutions will not agree to a lien going in front of what they're loaning money on. It is absolutely my suggestion that during the contract period, that the land revert back to the county if during that period anything goes wrong, one. And two, that you put a perpetual statement in the deed that says, after they're fully the owners, that the property would be, can only be sold for another manufacturing use unless the Board of County Commissioners approves it. And that way you don't have a, just pick your, something funny and put it in the middle of your industrial park, which wouldn't be funny. What you don't want is someone profiting off of our good intent to create, you know, 90-something jobs in the investment that we're doing.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. We've heard his presentation. I hear a motion to go up here.
Second.
So I can just take it, all the papers. Okay, we're kind of up here. Any questions or comments now?
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on this, Senate, I have leased space, office space to this company. So I have a direct impact committee. And therefore, I'm requesting that I give a vote on any incentive to the company. Since I am listed temporarily office space to them.
Subnote.
And that needs to be by vote.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Walker from the vote.
Got a motion?
Thank you.
Second. Any discussion? All the papers there? You oppose? Okay, you exclude. You have a discussion before we vote on this.
I'm second.
Okay, let's move to the board.
I make a motion that we approve that with the stipulations that we discussed with Mr. Abernathy on the property.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the incentives that our county has offered. We're willing to offer, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All the papers there?
Uh.
You oppose? Thank you very much.
Thank you. One thing I did not address timetable, and I had written that down. I would look for 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy. Next on the agenda is a housing proposal. We've got Mr. Steve Lockett here to give us a presentation on that. Welcome, Mr. Lockett.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me be here. For those of you who may not know me or may not remember, my name is Steve Lockett. I'm with the Isothermal Planning and Development Commission, currently serving as the interim executive director while IPDC completes its search for a new full-time executive director. What I've brought before you today is a proposal or a, back up, sorry. What we're looking at here, what you have in front of you in your packet, is information about the HUD home consortium. What this would allow us to do, if we as a region, and by that I mean all four counties in our Isothermal Region, the towns therein, agree to participate in this, is starting next year, July 1st, 2022, would allow our region to have access to approximately $800,000 of HUD funding that we currently individually cannot access. This kind of money will go towards affordable housing programs, projects, whether that's purchasing property, repairing property, or rental assistance programs. There are a number of ways that this money can be spent. And it's a fantastic program that allows us as a region to really tackle housing issues that right now we can't. And what I'm asking today is, one, any questions you all may have. But two, what we need is a lead entity, a lead governmental entity to serve as the primary entity for HUD. And I'm asking McDowell County to serve in that capacity. We, IPDC, could serve as an administrative capacity in which we could do the brunt of the work. I've spoken with Ashley and his staff, and we feel comfortable that this would be a good arrangement based on what we can offer as an organization, what McDowell County can do, considering your experience in housing, both at a county level and a municipal level. There is no fee to be involved in this. There's no upfront cost for you as the lead entity or any of the other four counties or any of our 23 municipalities in our Isothermal Region. What this, again, I want to reemphasize, this is $800,000 that we as a region, working together in consortium, would cooperate on and discuss projects and pick projects that could assist us in affordable housing. If we were to pick a project, let's say McDowell County identifies an affordable housing project they want to wish to work on, there is a 25% match. This match can be in terms of cash, can be assets, could be time. There are a number of ways that this match can be required, or can be met. But nobody, no county, no town is responsible for this unless they identify a project. So honestly, in many respects, this is money that we can access, up to $800,000. It can roll over if we don't use it every year. And this is frankly a pot of money that we can access that we haven't been able to before. And I think it is a great opportunity for our region to do this. And it's a great time because, as many of you know, housing is a huge issue across our entire region. As Mr. Abernathy mentioned, we have had an increase in people coming into this county, but also Rutherford, Pope, Cleveland Counties. And affordable housing is an ongoing issue that needs a lot of assistance. In the packet, what you have here is a PDF of a presentation that I did to our county manager, county managers and staff the other week, frequently asked questions, and a draft joint cooperation agreement that would be signed by this body and all other counties and towns that participate. And I know there was a lot to throw out there, but I'm hopeful that if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. This does need to be done tonight. Our deadline to get everything to HUD is June 30th. So we would just need this signed by that time.
I spoke earlier with the county manager. We went over this and talked about it to a pretty good extent. It seems like a really good deal from McDowell County, you know, especially good to us whenever there's no money involved.
Yeah.
So anyway, do we need to take action on this tonight?
Like Steve said, you don't have to. If you wanted to think about it, act on it next month.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to take action. One question for our staff, which I think I already answered to you tonight, but Allison, this won't be undue stress upon you and your staff, will it?
No, it shouldn't. Isothermal's been really easy to work with in the past. They basically do all of the work and they do, we will be required to pay the invoices and receive the money and report it in our financials as a project fund. But basically, in the past, they did all the work and they were really easy to work with.
And I will note that there is a 10% admin, admin pot available, so at $800,000, that the $80,000 will be split between the county and IPDC, depending on our agreement.
My point I bring in is a win-win situation. And I was there at the meeting that you had, or the webcast. And it was very inspirational. And I think it's totally a win-win because without this consortium, no county can touch it. You know, the bigger counties, we can't take advantage of any of the money. So we can't.
Well, affordable housing is something that's very important. It should be to all counties, and I certainly think that it is here in McDowell County.
And Gateway Foundation has stated we're 400, 500 units, houses, property, whatever. Housing's shy.
Any other questions or comments? What's place of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and participate and allow staff to do what's been requested here tonight concerning the housing consortium.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All the papers there? You oppose? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening. And I will be updating Ashley and Allison on the other things. And I will also just throw out there, I'm putting any new information I have on our website. So if you have any questions, reach out to me as well. Thank you all very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, HADMEF, is the 2023 reevaluation update. And we have Mr. Tim Kean and Mr. Tammy Wiley here to give us a presentation.
Okay. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, to give you a quick update. And I'll start back in 2019. 2019, January 1st was the effective date of our last reevaluation. We had a change in the county there, based on values, based on recent sales. As part of that revaluation, which was a desk revaluation, we found in going out during the appeals process...
Tim, we're going to try to do it well. No, we should be, I want to close that door or ask those people to lock the door.
As a result of the appeals in 2019, we found a high degree of difference in the area, in the county. And so what we did was we started making corrections at that point for folks who came forward and appealed. We brought that to the board. And because the last several revows have been limited to desktop appraisals, the board decided at that point to do a full measuring list. And so what we've done since that time, and what we've done in the field over the last nine to 10 months, has been, have been going out to every house, every property in the county, measuring at least two sides, and only two sides if they matched up, comparing the information that was on the cards. And so we've been doing that. Obviously, that has been impacted, or the speed of doing that has been impacted by COVID somewhat. We wanted to make sure that the taxpayers were kept comfortable because we are going into backyards and we are asking questions about bedrooms and bathrooms. With the hopes of making sure the integrity of the data is as accurate as possible, it goes a little bit slower. Which brings us to what I've handed out to you. What we have done, or what we are trying to do, we're in the process of doing, is actually a two-year cycle that it's going to take to complete. We are recognizing those corrections that we're finding in the field. Now, it's important to note that we are making those corrections in the field into the system now based on the 2019 data, the schedule of values from 2019. We're not looking at current sales, we're not looking at current market values. What we're doing is just correcting the data itself. And that means, in some cases, up and down. We're going to have some of those corrected this year, going out in notices before the end of April. That will reflect the first set of corrections. The second and final set of corrections will be recognized next year in the next notices that go out for appeals. And obviously, the following year, 2023, is the revaluation itself. The nice thing about doing this now and getting the data corrected is that the 2023 will reflect market changes only. The data will be correct. And we will have, you know, good data in, good valuations out. We'll have more consistency from the standpoint of neighborhoods, which were established for the first time in the 2019 revaluation. And, you know, hopefully, everything will be cleaned up, accurate, and we'll have a easier time supporting values and an easier time supporting the total value that comes out from that standpoint in each successive year, starting now. What I wanted to do, I passed out the statute that actually provides and allows for those corrections to be done, 105287. It's North Carolina General Statute, and it allows for these corrections to be made. But you'll see in number two, it specifically says that you go back to your last revaluation. You're not comparing it or you're not bringing it up to current standards. You're bringing it up to the previous standards established in 2019. So we're correcting components, we're not changing values. Obviously, if there is a difference in square footage, or the addition, or demolition, or whatever, houses burned down, which I've seen today, those will be corrected as we're going. Those will be reflected, those will be corrected, they will be, continue to be corrected until the revaluation.
Questions or comments?
So basically, you're just making sure you've got accurate data that's going to be used to determine the value in the 2023 rebound.
Yes, sir.
Because we don't want to overcharge someone.
Exactly.
Who, as you said, you went out and saw houses burned down.
Yes, sir.
It's no longer there. They shouldn't be assessed for a property that's stretched, it's no longer there.
Exactly. And what we're trying to do is we want to ensure that the taxpayers are confident in the data that's in our systems too. So the nice thing and the kind of two-edged sword about correcting those during the appeals So the, the nice thing and the kind of two-edged sword about correcting those during the appeals is we've got some properties that were accurate in 2019, but it might be next doors to something that it was not, so.
Do we need a motion to support what's going on?
Well, there's action requested, but I think I'll go here for Tammy before we, with Tammy on the, well, the discovery, we'll let her come up first. There is a request to action on this.
And the discovery statute is page two and three.
What I'm presenting to you today is, like Tim said, we is going out reviewing all the properties, and we are making corrections in the system. And what those corrections can allow, the statute says that we, if we find where, let's say a house has been constructed, and for some reason that house was missed to be put into the system, the, depending upon the number of years, we can go back as far as six current plus five for a discovery on those properties. So what we, what I'm presenting to you is to make a decision during this period of either no discoveries at all, a discovery as, as it is allowed to, current plus five years, or even as a discovery from 2019, if applicable, from 2019 to 2021. And the basis for that reason is because in 20, used to, all the tax bills were presented or sent out, and it had one value. In 2019, I requested with Linda, the collector, that we changed that to make sure that the property owner, when they received their bill, could, was, there was no confusion that a house, the dwelling and the property was taxed. It's one tax, but it is, it was listed separately. So every owner received not only a 2019 bill stating that, but they also received a notice of assessment in the 2019 revale. So in 2019, everyone was notified and showed that, hey, you have value in home and in land separately, where that was never the case before. So those are the three options presented to you for doing discoveries.
I will go ahead and say that personally, and this might take another night, I don't want to go back myself personally and charge people for something that neither we nor them either one knew about in the past, so that's just where I stand on that. Questions, comments, other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from Mr. Wood.
I've had discussions with several of you about it, and obviously talked to Ms. Wiley and Mr. Kane, and I've heard a lot of the same opinion as the chairman on, since this is an unusual process we're going through, great process, actually, but it is different from what we've normally done. I've heard some feedback that perhaps just move on and look forward, bill current year, and not look backwards, because sometimes it's hard to know why that house, or that barn, or that whatever was missed, was an oversight from one communication of departments internally? Was the house built surreptitiously, or?
Or did the homeowner fail to turn it in?
Right.
Not casting stones at anybody.
Right. There's various different explanations, and sometimes you have to act as a detective to kind of figure out really what happened. And so, I mean, you're all here now, but a lot of the feedback I had was just, okay, now we're going to look forward after 23's revale, maybe start back over, and if they start slipping through then, then it's maybe on the property owners. So that's just some of the feedback. And of course, you're all here now, if you feel differently.
Tammy, is this, are you talking about, say, Tim, as you're doing the, you're correcting data component, survey inside in the field, are you talking about, say, if somebody has a building, like you can buy out on Highway 70, a storage building, and you discovered that prior, it was not there, you're not talking about that right here?
No.
Because you're going to build that when you make that discovery, right?
Correct, yes.
What's any question I could, just clarify for you?
Well, we had talked about if we did do a discovery, making a value threshold, anything 25,000 or greater in value, discover then. So most of the items that you would find would be the homes or large buildings that had, you know, been constructed on the property. So that was the, I forgot to put that in my presentation, as far as speaking, that we had talked about a threshold. It wouldn't just be discovering, going through, discovering every eight-by-ten storage building that you bought at Lowe's or wherever and go back, no, we would go forward with those. These would be the, the large buildings that we would be discovering.
I think if someone had a piece of property that they had here, and it's set there, and then all of a sudden they build a new house on that property three years ago and have not, I think they would expect to pay the taxes on that. And so, you know, and looking at a situation like that, you know, going back on that particular person is very understandable, because, you know, they, they should know that they have to pay the taxes. But what I'm talking about the discovery thing, that, you know, maybe they couldn't have, wouldn't have been aware of, and so it's just a more sympathetic, I think, to the taxpayers in that regard.
So you're saying basically, on houses dating back between 2019 to now, that if that was a discovery, then you didn't really have to build that, is what you're saying?
That's what I would say.
And I would add, I would agree with that. I would add that we would waive the penalty and give the homeowner the benefit of that, because I've never seen the statute, you can charge a 10% penalty.
Yes, sir.
So I think, I would be for waiving that. It's, if they build a house, as the chairman said, they know they're living in that house, and that's a little different ballgame, but I still would err on waiving a penalty for that, and in good faith, hope that moving forward, anything else they put out there would at least, it would be accurately reflected on the tax department. Because that's what they pay, that's what a person pays, the taxes, that value, the tax rate. So you want to make sure you're, you're not being overcharged in everyone. And then again, you've got to responsibly make sure you're not, how do I want to say this, you're making sure that everybody's aware of what's, any new construction or new thing you're doing out there.
Yeah, there's, there's a situation where people have governed on the woodshed, or a barn or something, that, you know, they really didn't know that they were to report that.
That, that was the, the item that we were looking at to discover. We were, or presenting you for either discovery.
You're just threshold over 25,000.
Yeah, we were looking at a threshold, and mostly that would encompass any, you know, new homes, additions, buildings.
Anything like that.
Or if, for example, someone bought a piece of property, bought a house, and, you know, maybe they didn't know that they were supposed to report. So, you know, I can understand how it could slip and it didn't hold, but anyway, that's, that's my feelings on it, and every commissioner has their thoughts on it.
It would be protect, it would protect the homeowner, though, if you, when you do an addition, I think the packet said, that you pull a permit because?
Well, that automatically should take care of it.
And, and moving forward, because it's a great time to sell property right now. It's off the charts when people go to sell, so you would want that, you can't, what I'm saying is you can't count that if you have faulty wiring, not the right heights in the basement, it's got to be that protocol to be able to, when you resell with a real estate agent, to be able to be able to do that.
Well, the permit's called, that data should automatically go to the tax department, so, but anyway. Comments, questions from the board? What's the place of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to, for the reviewing of the properties and doing the corrections in 2021 and 2022, to, with the notice of the assessment happening in 2019 and getting it corrected, going back, discovery back to 2019.
I'll sit.
Just to clarify, if that $25,000?
A $25,000 limit or more? Correct.
One more question, Miss Teles. Does that include waiving that?
It'll waive the penalty. That is correct, what we discussed.
Okay, we've got a motion, second, any in discussion? All the papers there? Any votes?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wiley. Okay, moving to item A, old business. We've got the EMS bill and update. Mr. Wood, do you want to?
Sure, I'll take the lead, and Ms. Bell is here and can signal the do it, I guess, if necessary. A couple of weeks ago, you were presented information from Ms. Bell and her staff on contracting out the collection of EMS bills. So this has been a function that has been internal, I guess, since the inception, and we had noticed over, definitely my career, and I'm sure Ms. Bell's, more and more counties that are contracting out to a third party based on collection rates, complexity, insurance rules, et cetera. And honestly, it's something that we've looked at at times, and didn't seem to be the right time, but as we talked about a while ago, a couple of weeks ago, it honestly feels like the right time now. And so you had something before you, before, from a company called EMS-MC. They're a North Carolina-based company. They service most, the vast, vast majority of counties in North Carolina and many across the country that do EMS collections. I watched a webinar presenting the software, that also went over the items, and it seems very impressive for what they do. There is a cost, of course, when someone else is doing the work for you. The information is a little bit different than what was talked about, based on some clarification from the prior presentation. They receive 5% of every bill they touch, and so if we send the bill to them through the process, and they go through all their collection with no, no collection of the bill, after a certain period of time, it does come back to the county for additional efforts that the county can make. Even at that point, several years down the road, if the county does collect that bill, the company is owed that 5%. The justification is that they made effort in the initial stage, and so they would like compensation for that initial effort. So staff has reviewed this and would recommend the contracting with them effective July. Are there any questions, maybe more so from Ms. Bell, that we can handle?
Just for review, it is currently, right now, at 66% collection, and if we go with this company, the company's got a estimated receivable of 80%.
That's what they have done for other counties, yes.
Okay.
As Mr. Ellis stated, that, that's the difference is going to offset the cost.
Correct.
That's right.
And the company does keep up with the laws and the insurance changes and all that, which we do not have the manpower to do.
Right, right.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to accept this, and outsourcing the billing.
Second. A motion to second, any discussion? All the papers there? Any votes?
Thank you. Okay. The next item is emergency services, building update. I'll talk briefly just about the construction, if you've seen it, with the headquarters building more specifically. It is moving quite, quite along. It's good to see vertical construction and actual structure there with so much grading that had to take place. Mr. Keller does want to talk about a program for receiving donations, and get your blessing and approval on that for, that's perceived of that. That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. A motion. As Mr. Wood was saying, we would like to conduct a fundraising campaign for this headquarters facility for various reasons. One is to allow community members and citizens in this community to have part in this facility, which I predict is a 40, 50-year facility, the way that we've planned and designed this facility, it's going to meet the needs for many, many years to come. I think it's important, a lot of people that we serve come back and ask us, how can I help EMS and emergency services? Whether it's a memory of a loved one that was lost due to an illness or an accident, whatever it may be, I think this, this facility is an opportunity for the, the whole entire community to have buy-in as well. What we're proposing is to do a fundraising campaign that will assist in furnishing as well at, not only the building architecture, but also help furnish the EMS training facility that can be used and situated as a regional center for EMS training, emergency management, classes and training, fire rescue classes, classroom training, talk to folks at the community college about allowing that training center, the use at the fire and rescue college, because it'll be a larger, larger room than what this is. And also, the way the EMS training corridor was designed, it promotes the ability for multiple classes at one time. So with that said, the proposal is, we're still working the details, but the way the outside of the facility was designed, we want to erect a memorial, fallen hero memorial for emergency services personnel that were killed in the line of duty here in McDowell County, and that would be centered around the flagpole area. And with that, on the out, or the outlined layers of that paved area or concreted area, the ability for people to purchase engraved brick pavers to install around that memorial area. Two different types of pavers, one would be granite at a higher cost, the other one would be bricked, working several of the options as far as the cost on them. But that would be one way people could take part in this facility. The second being a three-tiered sponsorship of the facility itself, and to where, and this is much like what you've seen at the former hospital, I think the new hospital has a little bit of this, the YMCA, this facility has some of the engraved markers outside of the rooms. But the proposal would be that we do three tiers of donation levels, and the ability for folks to have their engraved name on a plaque centrally located in the facility.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
All the fine details, we're still working as far as the pavers and that kind of stuff, but 50,000-foot, it is a doable project that I think would serve us for many years to come.
What's the place of?
We'll make a motion, we approve the donation program, the staff request.
Second. A motion, second, any discussion? All the papers there? Any votes? Thank you, Mr. Keller. Budget process update, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. This is a really quick update on, on the budget process. We are very close to being done on the internal meetings with county departments. We have received, I believe, all of the agency departmental, excuse me, agency budget requests from funded agencies, maybe except for the school board, and a few other very small ones, but the vast majority have worked on that. And I have talked to Mr. Garrett about their requests, and they're waiting on their state information before they send theirs, which is typical. I did want to highlight some of the upcoming dates that are important budget-wise that are in here. We do have, speaking of school We do have, speaking of school board, on this Friday, we have a scheduled meeting with them at 8 o'clock to talk about budget, but also talk about other items of interest between the two boards, and that is the Old Ford Elementary. We'll definitely remind you of that. On May 13th, so skipping ahead a little bit, we have at least two fire and/or rescue departments that have indicated they might ask for a service district tax increase. And so Ms. Bell and I are discussing those with those agencies now to get more information to prepare for this meeting, and we'll be sharing that with you well ahead of time. Also, that evening, we would suggest having any requests, maybe around 5:00 that evening, then at 6:30, which is an annual tradition, has been the Fire Commission meeting, which is a reminder, is made up of the fire chiefs of the fire and rescue agencies in the county. That would be scheduled for that evening as well, resuming where we skipped last year. I'd like to present the budget to you on May 24th. We would need to have the budget public hearing on June 14th at that regular meeting, and we would suggest adopting the budget on June 30th. Because we have, we like to try to meet the last fist, last day of the fiscal year to go over budget amendments for the current year. That's the last day you can adopt the budget for next year. So that can change based on, those dates can change based on your input, of course, and there may be additional ones that might be required based on your request or something else that might come along. So these are ones that are not set in stone yet, except for maybe the hearing and the adoption.
No action required on any of that, so move along to the book shooting range update.
Very quick here. Mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I did have the opportunity with Chairman Brown to visit the site with the engineer for the state, Steve Bailey. We walked to the, the full length of the property, I guess, to where the building site will be, the range site. The, the big issue for that site right now is the bridge over Muddy Creek. We saw actual construction on the footers when we were there. The actual bridge structure that goes on top of that to either side has to be constructed off-site and understand from the contractor, there's very few companies that do that actual structure and they're behind. Sure COVID has something to do with it, of course, all the different work going on. So it's really dependent on how fast that bridge can go in, because the contractor can move some equipment over the temporary bridge, but not all of it over to the site until the bridge is in. So we'll be checking constantly to, on the bridge status over the next few weeks. The November, early November date still seems to be set, at least for now, for an opening, and so we are hopeful that will stay.
Yeah, I spoke to the contractors personally just a couple days ago and, you know, they're, they're not holding things up, it's just the, the company that provides the bridge, there's only two companies I think that they're aware of that do provide those particular bridges and, you know, it's just kind of like pulling teeth right now to get that to happen, but that's going to be the holdup for us. But it looks great and we, we done the tour of it and I think everybody's going to be really pleased whenever this thing is finished and we get to use it. So I'm real excited about it. Okay. Next thing in new business, we've got the child abuse and neglect prevention month proclamation. And let's see, we didn't have anyone here to speak on behalf of that.
No, sir. No, DSS Director Lisa Sprouse has sent that. April is child abuse and neglect prevention month and would ask that you approve that now. You do meet with her next week, but it's getting kind of late in the month, and so thought she asked if you could do that now.
We've got a proclamation and we'll ask Master Walker if he would read that proclamation.
Check. McDowell County Child Abuse and Neglect Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas in McDowell County for the fiscal year 2020, there were 724 reports of abuse and neglect. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of McDowell County. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2021 as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in McDowell County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families adopted this 12th day of April 2021, signed by Chairman Tony G. Brand.
Okay, you heard that. What's the pleasure of boarding on this proclamation?
Mr. Chair, making a motion to approve the proclamations, read.
Second. Motion second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item B, administrative items, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. I won't necessarily apologize for the link, there's a lot going on, but there are a few, so just bear with me on, on these items. The first item on your list, we are buying, or asking to buy, one ambulance, one pickup recreation, and four vehicles for the sheriff's office. Ms. Bell has worked on the financing for that, and you have a memo there for the quote from BB&amp;T, or I guess now Truist Bank. It's 1.2% interest over four years and would ask that you approve that total amount of
We have to maintain our emergency services and so what's the, in discussion? What's the pleasure of boarding on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion in second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item brought for you a couple of weeks ago, it's regarding the, an air handler. At the community college, you are required to cover operating and facility costs for the community college, of course. They had approached about a, a unit that was faulty. You'd asked for additional quotes, which were obtained, and the, the low quote remained at $52,149. They have $20,000 on hand that you've previously provided and they've asked for an additional $32,149 of capital monies to make it through the rest of this year to buy this equipment.
Okay, it's our obligation to see if that's taken.
And that's about ready to fail anyway.
That's right.
Any other discussion? What's the pleasure of boarding?
Making a motion to approve the purchase as presented by our county manager.
Second.
Got a motion in second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Wood.
The next item, it's labeled Foothills Industry Lease. Our transit department, when it was initiated several years ago, they needed space to operate out of, parking is and was a big deal. Where they were part of DSS, they had to move out somewhere else. Foothills Industries, located in the industrial park, had some excess space and provided rented space to the county at that time. The lease is up and without a good option as a replacement, staff is recommending to renew that for the next year. And of course, keep our options open, there are different grants, other accounting facilities that could be available at some point in the future, but right now kind of limited.
It's my opinion that we should go ahead and do this for another year, do another year lease on it if possible, and I'm sure at that time, by that time, possibly something else will.
What's the dollar amount per month we're paying on that lease?
Believe it's 9603 is the annual cost reflected, that's right, in the, in the lease. 75% is covered from federal funds.
Yes.
I'm sorry, 85%.
85.
Eighty-five.
So it's an $800 total cost a month, and so you're, and what's that, you know, 250 a month, county dollars, then roughly, so.
And they're currently, since you're, we're searching for a new director, and I know that the staff is coming to the admin building now, so the vehicles are staying over there.
They are at the annex facility.
Okay, got you.
Any other discussion? What's the pleasure of boarding?
Making a motion to approve the lease as presented.
One more.
Second.
Motion in second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, Mr. Wood.
You have the rail memorial project, last month, Mayor Little, excuse me, presented the, the project located near Andrews Geyser, recognizing the individuals that constructed the rail line from, in that area up to Swananoa Tunnel. Excuse me, Chairman Brown asked that we place this on the agenda for any consideration the board may make for a donation to the project.
I feel like, and I will put it into a motion, that we give them $1,000 to spend on that project and open the floor up for discussion.
What was your dollar amount, I'm sorry?
$1,000.
$1,000.
I second that motion.
Discussion. All in favor of $1,000, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, okay.
Okay, thank you. The next item, get to the end here, I promise. The sheriff had sent over a couple of position changes as far as where they would be slotted on the, the pay scale. And so you've got that reflected on the document here. It's a little hard to see the, the green highlighting, but some slight adjustments on where these positions are, and it reflects the reality of where the staffing is, position and salary-wise. So we'd ask that that be done to reflect the reality.
Okay, question, comment?
Mr. Wood, is that your recommendation to the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve as requested.
Second. Motion second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just a couple more, also from the sheriff's office, you had a request for Detention Officer Dora Lewis, who's retiring, and the sheriff has asked that Ms. Lewis be granted her, her badge.
Make a motion to grant the request.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Last two, I promise. EMS write-offs or routine, hopefully, knock on wood, or the fewer of these with the new company, might take a while, but ask those to be approved.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Motion second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And the last item under administrative items would be the budget amendments, you have GF44 through 49 and 911F3, 911 Fund.
What's the pleasure of boarding? Approve GF40, say those again, we've got it here, but.
Yes, sir. 44 through 49 and then 911F3. Be glad to go over any of those you would like.
We've got them before, what's the pleasure, board?
Then the sheriff make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Motion in second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is tax matters, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir, these are routine, again, items presented from the tax assessor. We would ask that you approve as presented.
Pleasure of boarding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, all in, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next thing is the board appointments, Madam Clerk.
We have one vacancy on the planning board, and this is the second reading, and you have six applications, and I put your ballot on the table, if you will, please mark it and sign your name.
This man is there, is he there?
It is unanimous for being the same.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item is citizen comments, is there anyone here that wishes to speak today and says a comment? If you would, come up and sign in, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the items that were added earlier, do you want to do those now or after citizen comment?
Oh, we could after.
We can do it after.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to Mr. Staff, Board Communications.
The added items.
Yes.
Talked about trash.
Yeah, I'll make it real quick. Okay, we always, commissioners get calls about trash, bagged trash outside. I can take this spot where there's a, right, right close to the city limits where there's about 100 bags in a ravine. So I would, I would like to see the board, if it's so desire so of the board members, to have our planning board start to look and investigate and present back to this board a draft version of a trash ordinance. I know that Burke County just completed one, Mr. Wood, is that correct?
It actually, I think it just discusses in ordinance and I think it morphs into a resolution. But it's a hot topic amongst counties right now.
I think it'd be a great idea to send that to the board. Very motion on that, we send that to the board, to the planning board.
They've made the motion, I'll second.
Okay. Motion second, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now it's taken here.
Something, Mr. Chairman, I had a comment on was the Recreation Department. I know county staff has, has received bids to do the sound baffles by a professional company. And when you go to the gym and basketball season's going to be kicking in another three, four months, five months, if two people are in that gym talking at the recreation department, it sounds like everybody's screaming. And so Mr. Wood has talked to a company who can do that, and we do have money in that, in that department that we set aside. So I would just make a motion that Mr. Wood, based upon the information that you gave regarding the price to do that, that we go ahead and authorize that to start and get that project done.
I'll second that, if that's your motion.
Yes, ma'am. I'll make a formal motion.
Motion in second, in discussion.
Don't take the ball, people, it just takes the basketball.
Yeah, exactly.
It's terrible.
I agree.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Third thing I had, Mr. Chairman, the Zoom, I'm all for everybody having access to what we're doing, but we, we show the move, the meeting currently on cable TV. So we had two viewers last month watch the Zoom meeting and two the month prior to that, the meeting prior to that. So it's undue work on our staff and So it's undue work on our staff, and it's being filmed and shown anyway. I just make a motion, we do away with Zoom altogether.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? You make a motion?
I say, sir.
In your second?
Yes, sir.
In discussion? All in favor say aye.
Okay, fourth thing, the mask, talked to William Keller, Mr. Keller, he's still here, and he gave some good advice. I know that we've had, prior to coming into today's meeting, we've had days of two, one, seven positives. And as far as the county employees, I want to look at the possibility of if somebody's fully vaccinated with either the two-shot version or the one-shot Johnson or Johnson, to go ahead and allow them not, they can have their option, but not make it mandatory that they wear a mask. But I, after consulting with Mr. Keller, I want, he recommended that we wait, or he would say that you need to review this after Easter to see if the variant, Mr. Keller, or and/or a spike occurs that would really not be wise to lift that. So I would like to see us look at that next month after we see the data and the information of Mr. Keller and the science, and try to make a decision. And that might would also increase employees who, or encourage them to go ahead and get the shot. And the shot's not, I know I've gotten it and had both shots and had no side effects. It affects people differently, I understand that. But I think that it works to the point where it's time that we consider that, and look at it.
By consensus, we'll look at that again then, next meeting, right? Okay.
Third thing.
Next thing.
And close session for personnel matter.
Motion going to close session.
So, Wood? Right.
We are out of close session. Dear motion, we go out of.
Second.
All in favor? Dear motion, would you?
Have a lunch, no resume. Yep. Thanks.
We're sorry, that right there. Most cheese. We are adjourned.